A little late, we're returning from closed session, may I have a report out please?
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item number two was existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D1, and there were two matters. The first one was Serrato versus the city of Beaumont, case number RIC 1810937, there was no reportable action. The second item, under number two, was Peters versus Beaumont et al., case number RIC 1707116, and there was reportable action on that item. The plaintiff in that case recently served the former city attorney Joseph Aclofy with the lawsuit as a defendant in the case. In response to that, Mr. Aclofy sent a letter requesting that the city defend him and pay his legal fees incurred in defense of the case. The council took action voting to deny Mr. Aclofy's request for a defense, and the vote was Mayor Martinez to deny the request, Vice Mayor Santos to deny the request, Councilmember Laura to deny the request, Councilmember Carroll to deny the request, and Councilmember White to deny the request. The next item was item number three, and that was conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D1. One case adverse to Norton Rose, case number RIC 1904645, there was no reportable action taken. Item four, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D1, Urban Logic versus the city of Beaumont, Riverside County Superior Court, Superior Court case number RIC 1707201, there was no reportable action taken. Item I was a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D1. One matter related to national opiate litigation, listing all U.S. cities as class members, including Beaumont, which action is titled "In Ray: National Prescription Opiate Litigation, MDL Number 2804," and that's in the Northern District of Ohio Federal Court. And the question before the council there was whether to take action to remove itself as a class member in that litigation, and the council unanimously voted to remain a class member in a negotiating class in that litigation. Item number six, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D1 and/or two and/or three, workers' compensation, case number PASN 002921, COBM 0051, and COBM 0069, and there was reportable action on that, and there was a decision by the council to settle the case for $85,000, and the vote in favor of that settlement was Mayor Martinez, yes, Vice Mayor Santos, yes, Councilmember Laura, yes, Councilmember Carroll, yes, and Councilmember White, yes. And then lastly, there was item number seven, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.9D4, one potential case, and this is a potential case adverse to AIG Insurance Company, and there was no reportable action taken on that matter, and that's a report out.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, and with that, we will go into the October 1st, 2019 regular session at 6:16 PM. May I have called to order, please?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Lara.
Here.
Councilmembers Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Bratton Santos.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here. And let's have stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Melman, would you lead us?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, do we have any requests for excuse absence? Approval or adjustments to the agenda? Conflict of interest disclosure? All right, seeing none, we will go to the recognition today. So do we have a member coming up for this? Not necessarily? Okay, then I will read the proclamation. So this is National Code Enforcement Week, and I would like to read the proclamation for the Code Enforcement Appreciation Week. So it states, "Whereas the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Beaumont through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances, dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers have challenging and demanding roles, and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities. Whereas the role of many Code Enforcement Officers has expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise and training of Code Enforcement Officers in the community. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers are dedicated, highly qualified, highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers often have highly visible roles in the city of Beaumont, and regularly interact with the public in a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as Code Enforcement Officers. Therefore, whereas the city of Beaumont wants to recognize and honor the Code Enforcement Officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve quality of life within our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, the city of Beaumont hereby proclaims the second week of October in 2019, and annually thereafter, to be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Beaumont, and be it further resolved that the City Council calls upon Beaumont residents to join in in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our Code Enforcement Officers. Congratulations." That'll be entered into the very well-deserved proclamation. Thank you, Chief, for your representation. Okay, so moving on, we will go to the public comment period, do we have public comment today? Okay, so we will not have public comment, therefore we will move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are taken as one action item unless an item is pulled for further discussion here or at the end of action items. Do we have a request to speak for any consent item?
No sir.
Do we have any requests from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to approve consent calendar items two through seven?
Second.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Bratton Santos.
Yes.
Yes, okay, we have no public hearings today, so that brings us to action items. Approval of all ordinances and resolutions to be read by title only. Number eight, purchase of three 2020, or 2020 Ford Explorer Police Interceptors, and lease of two 2020 Ford Explorer Police Interceptors for the police department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And so the police department, once again, to maintain a fleet that is safe to operate, not only for the officers and but for the community's safety, we've identified that we need five vehicles this year. We want to purchase three of the police vehicles outright for patrol purposes, and then we want to lease two others. One vehicle is slated for the school resource officer, which in that contract with the school district, they provide for the vehicle, and so that payment that they make would offset that lease payment. And then the other vehicle would be for the newly implemented and now active business liaison officer, and so we believe that both these vehicles should be about a seven to eight-year vehicle, so with a four-year lease, where you purchase the vehicle for $1 at the end of it, we're still then have another about four years of using the vehicle, or we're not making a payment, and then we didn't outlay a large amount of capital. Of course, we still need to outfit and equip all five of the vehicles, which is a big part of this cost, but a lot of the equipment is transferable, depending that we still utilize Ford Explorers. The Ford has released the new 2020, which is estimated to save the city a lot of money in fuel efficiency and maintenance with the idling program that they've installed. So Ford held back the 2019 models, that's why last year we asked for the Chevy Tahos, waiting in anticipation of this vehicle, which is supposed to save us money, and it's arrived, and so we're ready to put it into our fleet. And so before council asking to authorize staff to retire and auction the listed vehicles from the police department fleet, authorize staff to purchase three and lease two vehicles in the total amount of $195,114.35, and then because some equipment, we get a quote, but things come in or they're, they change in price by the time the vehicles come, so we're looking for a not to exceed of $81,000 in equipment from West Coast Lights and Sirens. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, do we have public comment?
No sir.
Okay, then we'll entertain questions, discussion from council. Good, I'll entertain a motion if not.
May I make a motion to authorize staff to retire and auction listed vehicles from the police department fleet at a cost of $870. Also authorize staff to purchase three, lease two, police vehicles in a total amount of $195,114.35 from National Auto Fleet Group, and authorize staff to purchase emergency equipment and installation for all vehicles in the amount not to exceed $81,000 from West Coast Lights and Siren.
I'll second that.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Lara.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor Bratton Santos.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, with that, action item number nine, provide directions to staff on establishing a moratorium prohibiting self-storage, recreational vehicle storage, vehicle parking facilities, and similar uses. Hello.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're before you tonight requesting direction regarding establishing a moratorium that would temporarily prohibit self-storage, recreational vehicle storage, vehicle parking facilities, and similar uses. As you're aware, we have recently adopted the Economic Development Strategic Plan, we're also in the process and getting towards the end of completing the city's general plan update. With that, the current general plan has goals and policies that are established, and the Economic Development Strategic Plan has identified some additional goals and strategies for direction the city would like to move. As we do with any project that comes in, we evaluate it to make sure that it's consistent with the direction the city would want to go, with the established goals and policies, and now with the new Economic Development Strategic Plan, and the forthcoming general plan update, and the additional or revised goals and policies, we also look at those at this point to determine whether or not we would be approving something now that in six or eight months may not be consistent with the direction that we've been given. So what staff has found with these types of uses identified is that they are not necessarily in compliance, or they don't necessarily work towards achieving the goals that are established, or the goals that are identified in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, or what we anticipate will be what's adopted with the general plan update. So in an effort to make sure that we can approve projects that are consistent with the direction the city wants to go, staff is requesting direction from council to, well, as to whether or not you would be interested in establishing a moratorium, so as we complete the process of the general plan update, we can look at current allowances for these types of uses, and make sure that as we conclude the general plan update and look at any zoning code changes that may take place along with that, that we are properly citing these businesses, and that we have proper development standards in place to ensure that if we do allow these uses, that they can be consistent with the direction that the city is going. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or have any discussion you'd like to have at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Public comment?
No sir.
No sir, okay, then, so I'll entertain questions from council, discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Lara.
I thought I read in here, we're, I think we're currently processing one case for a storage yard, is that right?
We have one, we have one that is sort of in limbo, it was requested to be continued or put on hold at the applicant's request, they're having some issues out on site with some of their environmental constraints, and with the improvements that the city is requesting, so I think they're trying to figure out what they're going to do. So that's one that is sort of pending, it's been to council, or, excuse me, it's been to planning commission, and then it was continued indefinitely, we have not heard back from the applicant yet. We have just approved a couple in the past year that are under construction in some shape or form.
Okay, how long will this current one, will we allow this one to continue?
So there's no, I don't know that there's anything in the code that actually says that it would die. I know we have time constraints on approved COPs if they're not acted on, the code doesn't actually speak to unapproved, or just applications. If they're making progress, if they've been in communication with us, we generally will follow up and say, hey, what's the status, you know, because they have paid fees, they have been through the process, they have been to a hearing at this point. I think if we were to enact a moratorium, this one is in the process enough that we would go ahead and allow them to continue or finish through, because they've already initially started the public hearing.
Okay, is there any way to enact a moratorium and then give them a timeframe in which they need to finish?
That would be maybe a question for legal.
You can do that. Okay.
Question, there's a lot of questions, Mr. White.
In the staff report here, there's a chart with use in CG and CCM and C.
Yes.
Can you sort of give me an overview of what that chart is telling me?
Sure, so these are the zoning designations where we may or may not allow these types of uses to take place. So CG is your general commercial, that's typically the area along Sixth Street through the city. Community commercial are the areas you'd see down like where Sangre Gogón Village is, the Center Point Shopping Center, Best Buy, even though those are specific plans, that's generally the location where you would see the community commercial designation, as well as up along Oak Valley Parkway and Interstate 10. So those corners up there. The manufacturing zone is your area that would be down south of the freeway, where you see the Hidden Canyon Development, where Wolverine and Amazon are located, and in that general area, up towards Beaumont Avenue, and then there's a little bit to the east of Beaumont Avenue as well, along First and Second Street in that area. Commercial manufacturing is a very small little designation we have, Fifth Street on the very west end of town, almost like where you hit the freeway, and it's not, I don't actually know that there's an area big enough in town with that designation that would accommodate any parking or storage. And then the Sixth Street overlay is Sixth Street on the east end, Beaumont Avenue overlay, Beaumont Avenue up to about 12th or 13th Street, and then Urban Village overlay is the area that's undeveloped currently, near Petrero and the 60, that area.
And those are all, when you say those are represented by those zoning is general plan, future, that's the general plan we haven't approved yet, correct?
No, this is actually the current.
Okay.
Right, a lot of that is not changing, a little bit will change, but a lot of these designations will still remain in place.
And CP and N? What do those mean?
Oh, I'm sorry. Permitted, conditionally permitted, or not permitted, yes.
Okay, and do we have a, do we have a problem with storage facilities in Beaumont?
I'm not sure I would call it a problem, do we have a fair amount of them? Sure, I wouldn't be able to quantify that like on a per capita basis compared to other cities, I can.
Do you know if they're got a lot of extra space, or they're full, or do we have any idea on that?
From my understanding, most of them are pretty full. We're approaching this strictly from a consistency with what we have to look at standpoint. We do understand, and what we've heard from a lot of people, and we get inquiries for this type of use, almost on a daily basis, that they do very well out here, because we're a very residential area, and people tend to have RVs out here, and, you know, lots of goodies that need to be stored in places that aren't their house.
And the conditional and permitted use, do you see that changing once the general plan's in place?
So the, no, will not change as a result of the general plan, if there is some zoning consistency that has to be addressed, like on the Sixth Street area, because we're going to do the downtown specific plan, we may see some changes there, but across the board, it won't change, it won't necessarily change all of these, but we will see some changes. Sixth Street, Beaumont Avenue overlay, maybe a little bit down in the community commercial area, because some of that area will have a proposed transit-oriented development overlay, and I think some of the uses will change there, so there could be, there could be some areas that will change.
In general, more restrictive or less restrictive?
Probably more restrictive.
And we're, and this is not impacting anybody who's already in business, or have already, in the stages that you talked about?
Correct, and staff's intent with this is not, I'm not suggesting in any way that we eliminate these type of uses, we're just asking for some time to digest these uses as they relate to what's existing and what's being proposed, so that we don't create any non-conforming uses locationally, and so we don't create anything that may be inconsistent with the direction that council is wanting to go.
Thank you. Santos?
I'm good on this.
You have a question?
The truck stops and terminals, and then you make a reference down in one of the lower paragraphs about either storage or vehicle truck parking, does that mean potentially a salvage yard, or does that mean for parking for vehicles that come and go?
Yes, ma'am, for parking for vehicles that would come and go.
Okay.
So we have a couple instances where I think there have been developments that have maybe outgrown their ability to accommodate all the trucks on site, and we've had some requests for off-site truck parking. We have considered those previously on a case-by-case basis, requiring development review and site improvements and things like that, but we also have had quite a number of inquiries for people who see a vacant lot and think, oh, this would be a great place just to park trucks. And so, again, that use not being consistent with the goals and policies that we have to analyze a project, so we're trying to have some time to digest this.
Thank you.
So Ms. Taylor, the... So, Ms. Taylor, the 10, the 16 active licenses we have now, so basically in the bottom of that paragraph, it's, there's two pending in the plan check phase, construction phase. But the one that you said on hold is not a storage facility, it's the vehicle.
The one that is pending is an RV.
Slash?
RV storage.
Okay, but not a slash sign?
No. The two that are in construction, one is an RV storage facility, and then one is a self-storage facility that also has RV parking on it.
And we don't have dumpy on any of ours?
No. The most recent ones we approved did not have dump stations that have been a black one.
And the moratoriums?
So, moratoriums, generally speaking, we have a 45-day first run, and then it has to come back to for an additional 10 months, 15 days, if you so choose. And then, I can't remember what the third.
Two, that then you can, and that 10-month, 15-day period has to be approved by four fisc vote. And then you can do two 12-month extensions, also requiring a four-fisc vote, and it has to be done after a public hearing, and you have to make legislative findings to support the adoption of the moratorium.
So, this initial one is in the 45-day?
Yeah, 45 days is the initial.
Initial.
And then you can extend it for 10 months and 15 days, and then you can do two 12-month extensions after that, if you so choose, each requiring a four-fisc vote.
Well, I think it's prudent that we follow our steps.
Just a follow-up question to that. Today, we're giving you direction to come back, hold the hearing, and then we approve the moratorium. We're not approving.
Yeah, this is purely for direction today.
I'm good with that.
And can I, I do need to state, just for the record, I did have one constituent, Mr. Dave Castaldo, call and discuss this with me, and he wanted me to provide the information to you, saying he is, he is not in favor of eliminating this use altogether, but understands where staff is going with the direction at this point in time. And I said that I would let you guys know that we spoke.
You can inform him at the public hearing, he can come and comment if he'd like as well.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm good?
I'm good with that.
All right. So, are you in favor?
Back.
Okay, that will bring item number 10, provide direction to staff on the sign ordinance as it pertains to billboards and digital display conversions.
All right. So, this is another item for discussion and direction. Currently, the city has a billboard policy that says we do not, we're not allowing any new billboards, and we are not allowing any conversion to electronic display for any of our existing billboards. This is another, another case in which staff has recently seen an uptick in inquiry about, not so much new billboards, but converting to electronic display. And so, at this, you know, previously, we have been providing ordinance information to anyone who calls requests, just saying that this is the policy that's adopted. But I thought, considering the number of inquiries we've had as of late, that it was worth revisiting with council, seeing if you would be interested in having staff work on any changes to this policy, or if we'd like to just continue with the policy as it is. We do have approximately 18, 18, I have some for the public as well, 18 billboards. The list says 30 that's coming around to you guys here, and it's got some map little pinpoints on there you can see. They're primarily located on the corridors, your freeway locations, and whatnot. The majority of these are Lamar Outdoor Advertising Billboards, with the exception of a few that are owned by others. The inquiries have come from both Lamar Advertising and other private individuals, so it has not just been the advertising agencies that have been interested. But the, if you have a question about any of these in particular, or, we have a, we have an agreement with Lamar Advertising for some of the billboards, which goes back a number of years. So, they have identified some that are existing, some that they need to remove, not all of those have been removed. I don't want to make this specifically about them, though, this is really about the policy, and if there's any change in direction that you'd like to go. It just so happens they are the largest holder of the billboards of the city.
All right. Any comments? Just a quick clarification now, because I remember this came up, and I thought we gave direction for council to, for staff to look into this. So, is this like, okay, are you sure you want us to keep looking into it, or is that what?
This may have been prior to me.
Okay. And that's my opinion.
It was even prior to me, too.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. So, in part of what we're doing is going back and looking at some of these things that have been on the list that we need to address, so I apologize if you're having to give direction again, but...
That's okay. I just want to make sure there was something I wasn't missing, you know?
We want to make sure.
Mr. White?
So, I've learned that the area through Beaumont, in the industry of billboards, is known as Billboard Alley. So, a couple of questions I have for you. They, I know it's not our, let me ask you this straight. Are there any that are not Lamar's?
I think there's two or three that are not Lamar's. The one that comes to mind in particular is the one at the Shell Station. It's the big one that has the city.
Yeah, besides the Welcome Beaumont.
I think there's, I think there's a couple out west that I could identify on the map that were not on Lamar's list, but I can double-check that.
Okay. Well, I'm of the same opinion I was before. I think we should promote and allow for digital billboards. I understand that we have some money. If Lamar is our only primary owner right now, the rule is that no new billboards unless one's taken down.
Absolutely, yeah.
Which means Lamar is the only one who can put up new billboards, correct? Because I think that there's like a 500-foot requirement between billboards, and some of these are less than 500 feet already.
Yes.
But I think if we quit set a policy that said to a billboard owner, to Lamar, that if you, because these digital ones are more profitable for them, and it might be a way to say, you want to, we'll let you put up a digital billboard if you take two down.
Sure.
Or three down, or something like that. Because then that would sort of clean it up, and I still think it's one thing to be Billboard Alley, it's another thing then in a few years to be Billboard Alley with all the old billboards. You know, so if there's something we could do to lower the numbers, but at the same time be a little more modern. I've seen some, I don't know if you guys have seen these, but some, I'm sure you have, some of the city-themed digital billboards, that I think Lake Elsinore has one, and Harupa Valley has one, too. That's another option, is you go to Lamar and you say, we'll let you put up a digital one, but it has to be, we get to design it to make it look, to match our brand, and we also get access to, my understanding, you can get a cut of the revenue.
Yeah.
As well as use, put city messages and use it for city messages. So, if we had an opportunity to lessen the number of billboards, as well as to sort of modernize the way it looks driving through Beaumont, and maybe give what Nancy Carroll's always asked for, which is a gateway, something that says, hey, you're here in Beaumont. And some of those signs in Elsinore and Harupa Valley, and I think someone else is working on one now, too, I think would really send a good message, I think.
So, just to comment briefly, I know from experience dealing with this issue, that some billboard companies will contend that it is a taking if you mandate that they give you space on their billboard, so...
No, I understand that, and I think that would just be part of a negotiation, and we wouldn't demand it. But I know with those, with the, I've spoken to the owner of the ones, or not the owner, I think the city's the owner on a couple of those, that he was very happy to give room for city messages.
We do have a revenue-sharing agreement with Lamar currently for some of the billboards there, so we would be able to revisit that as well, as part of this discussion, because there's, there's all kinds of items in that agreement, as I've read through it, which includes them acting in good faith and removing some of the billboards, which I think are identified to remove, that I think we, Carol and I identified, that have not been removed yet. So, that would be another part of the conversation, specific to them.
Thank you.
If that case, if I remember correctly, that's the one where they go larger, so they get to go with the larger billboards, reduce others in certain ways.
Yeah, I think we have the ability to discuss what size parameters and in design and all that would look like, so, yeah.
Other members?
I got a...
Got a few comments?
Um...
Go, Ms. Carroll.
Well, okay, we've kind of mixed a few things here. I think that it's one thing to talk about removing billboards that need to be done, and really kind of have been ignored. Now, they're becoming a bargaining chip, but they've kind of been ignored for a period of time. But digital billboards are a whole different animal, and increasing the size of a billboard and making it digital is sort of a little bit of a double whammy at that particular point. They're much more visible from residential housing that is near the highway. We have, you know, we have restrictions where if you want to hang a light outside your garage, you've basically got to go exactly by the rules for the city, because we have this low-light rule over the city. And the digital billboards create a tremendous amount of light. If you've ever been by any of them, and you notice there's a significant difference. So, there's the visual for the residents, there's coming up with a bigger billboard that'd be maybe good for the business, a little more revenue for the city, but what are we actually sacrificing for that? Are we making the residents have to look at something? Have we looked at where these are located? Have we analyzed if they become digital? If you live in Three Rings Ranch, and you look out your back window of your second-story house, are you going to be looking at a great big, huge digital billboard? So, I feel like there's so many more issues that are embedded in what seems like a good pro-business kind of like, yeah, let's help them generate a little more, you know, money. I think there's so many more issues that are embedded in here. And then, for some people, and I'm no expert on it, because I haven't delved into it, there's also safety issues with digital billboards. So, I kind of don't like putting them together with, that's just my feeling. Because I feel like the digital billboards are a significant change. Yes, they always want them bigger, and when they get them bigger, they even want them bigger than that. And the impact on the community hasn't really been put into this. The impact, I don't know anything, I'm no expert on traffic issues that are related to, but I have heard a lot of concerns, and you can tell me that they're just nothing but rumor later. That's okay, I'll listen to you when you do. But I don't know all the answers to that. And, I don't know, I don't know that it's, you know, worth the swap to get a little more revenue and a little more, and I actually am not impressed that there's been no action to take down billboards that have been put too close together, and now we're talking about it like it's some sort of a, hey, maybe we can get them to follow what they're supposed to have done anyways.
Yeah, understood. That's part of the reason why we're having this conversation, because if council's direction is to do nothing with the policy, we will keep enforcing it as is. If you'd like us to look into any or all of these items, we're happy to do some research and look at safety concerns, like a visual impact, look at what other cities are doing as far as size and location, and distance between billboards, and all of those things. So, purely for discussion, direction at this point, and all those things would be considered.
Let's go ahead and have everyone weigh in. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, digital billboards, for me, I don't think that's, fits with our city. Small town, kind of everybody knows one another type of atmosphere. But one thing I would like to look at, though, is maintenance of existing billboards, and keeping those looking neat and safe, shall we say? You know, the other concern with digital billboards is I, my office is in Riverside. I can see the one in Corona in the early morning, when it's dark, which is quite a ways away. So, they, the light that they emit is quite bright, and they removed all the streetlights on our street, so, because of that low nighttime lighting ordinance, whatever that is.
Dark sky.
So, not that I couldn't use the light from a billboard to help make my street safer, but I'm not looking forward to any type of a billboard like that. It just doesn't, I think a Vegas one, or a casino popping up whenever I see one of those billboards, and so I'm not a big fan of those. But I do want to make sure that existing billboards are being maintained, and they're looking clean and neat. And so, when you're driving through, even though there's not a sign on it, it still looks nice.
Interesting.
Ms. Santos?
On my side, it's the concern of the allocation, if we do go in the digital, especially on the safety side. But if we do go in that direction, probably we're looking around on the eye, you know, probably two or three billboard within the city. And I will echo on that, the brightness of the lights and everything. I don't know if we could limit the, you know, to dark them on a certain time, you know, I don't know. I mean, you know, on that side, they will darken that on a specific time and everything. So, we have, we have the low-light ordinance in the city, still we haven't changed that yet. So, that's my main concern there, is so bright, and, you know, I drive a lot in the freeway, and I could see that, even in San Bernardino. Then you go to Morongo, you know, you could see that, like a distant one every day on that side. So, that's my main concern on that side.
Initially, I didn't have a problem with the concept of having iconic billboards in the city. I thought perhaps maybe if we strategically position them, like maybe around the economic areas, that might help promote those areas that have our higher retail and so forth, and not so much in the residential areas. So, if we might be able to look at strategically planning, and then, you know, size and lighting, you know, that could be possible. I agree with Mr. Lawrence, though, I think we always have to go back, and, because you're always going to have paper ones, you're not going to have total digital. I don't see us going total digital. So, we definitely have to address that, the upkeep of what we have, and all that maintenance. So, I'm getting kind of a half-and-half feel from the council. Do we feel that we need to direct staff to at least look into the lighting issue, the sizing issue, some other cities for electronic, or do we want to just not go electronic at all?
May I make a follow-up comment?
Yes.
I personally would rather see six or nine digital, or six digital versus 18 that we have now. And I've done a lot of research into the safety issues in general, they're more safe. They're safer for the people who are putting them up, and they also, I think some studies have shown that, that it actually keeps drivers awake more when they see them. So, I think looking into the safety issues would be a good way to go. I don't know who, if anyone, I know it was an Icon at one point, but likes the Welcome Beaumont one, I know that Councilman Carroll does not like it. I think that could be a good opportunity to, you know, to replace that one with something that's a little bit more, I mean, that's a digital one, it's an electrical one. So, I still would like to look into the safety issues to address some of those. These that are five, more, less than 500 feet, it's because the law came in after they were placed at less than 500 feet. We can't do anything about those now, correct?
I think they are grandfathered in.
Okay. Okay. So, that was all my comments.
It sounds like I'm hearing two different things. Obviously, staff needs to look into the maintenance of the existing ones, and revisit the ones that should have been removed already, that have not been removed, and see what we can do about those. And then separately, maybe look at some other information regarding billboards, what other cities are doing, lighting, safety, distances, all those things.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, because we're kind of at that point.
Okay. Looking at what other cities are doing could be something we could do. Looking at safety issues, the pros and cons, yeah, it might wake up one driver, it might distract another, you certainly could look into... You certainly could look into that. But it doesn't address some of the common things that were brought up, which is the emitted light and the restrictions that we put on residents for what kind of light they can put in their backyard. And also, it doesn't address the small-town feel. It doesn't address when you look out the second-floor window of Three Rings Ranch or wherever the billboard is downstream from. You know, are you going to be looking at, you know, Buy a Car or in Marino Valley? I mean, you know, because often the billboards really have no relationship whatsoever to what's being advertised for commerce within the city that they're put up. There's a certain range that they have to affect. So for me, and I'm only one person, but I don't feel that there's any strong indication for the city to go in the direction of digital billboards.
It's just something the council even wants staff to spend their time on. Past the condition of the existing billboards, do you even want us to spend time looking into the regulations or switching over? Is that the baseline question?
Right.
Right.
I think we're going to probably move over.
Well, I know that neither of you were here when we did this before, but that was the direction we gave you.
Staff.
I understand it wasn't you, but that was the direction we gave you, was to come back and address some of the safety issues and other concerns that we're raising tonight.
Although the feel at that time was pretty much the same as it is now.
Agreed.
I think we bent a little bit just to get some, you know, to get some info. So the question is, do we want to still pursue that info? Oh, comments? Okay, Mr. Trezor.
I have a question curious. What kind of revenue does this generate?
You know, I don't have that offhand.
Is it a couple thousand dollars a year or fifty thousand? I mean...
I've heard twenty to thirty thousand a year.
That's peanuts. For the, for what it looks like.
Well, I think that's the question, is the aesthetics and the effect.
Yeah, I'm not looking for revenue.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
No, I wasn't looking. I'm saying for that amount of money, I mean, I'm going to get rid of them.
Mr. Curious, can the degree of brightness in a digital be controlled in any way?
It can be. And so I did some reading on that prior to preparing this. And technology has advanced enough where there's daytime brightness and then there's nighttime, you know, lighting that can be adjusted. Now, whether or not that would comply with our dark-skY ordinance or we would have to make some exception for the locations, you know, that would be a different conversation because we would have to have that evaluated, you know, on the...
But it couldn't be turned down further?
Sure, it can be adjusted, but that would be for us to... If direction is given, that would be something we would have to look into more.
And just, you know, I'll throw this out. Having managed smaller boards, not electronic billboards, but electronic signs in different cities, that's always an issue. That will be a code enforcement issue from the moment you let the first one go up because everyone will believe it's too bright or too dull. And controlling it, and you can set what it can be at. I mean, you'll have to set what's called a nit level. And then we don't have the equipment necessarily to manage that and measure it. And so it's going to be, I mean, if you do, if we move forward with that, I just want you guys to know this will be a constant code enforcement issue for us to deal with. We can, but it'll be something you...
All right, Mr. Lara.
Light trespass is a huge issue with those. There was one, it's interesting that this came up when I was looking at the agenda item because there was one that was hacked where people showed pornography on it, which is, yeah.
What was the address of that one?
Yeah. The... For me, and I'm not a pro-digital guy and understanding kind of the struggles we've had building up and planning staff, I'm sure there's probably other items that are languishing that you may want to focus on outside of digital billboards. So for me, I think I'd rather focus on general plan, the economic plan that we have, the storage issue because we've got 45 days unless we extend that, which can create some issues with other companies or development. So I'd rather have you focus on some of the planning things that maybe have been languishing because you haven't had the staffing levels that you've needed to tackle some of those.
So if I may, let me just pose to the council and we'll go down and take a yes or no. So I propose that at this time, the council directs staff to not further look into electronic billboards at this time. So if I can just go down, you want to roll call it and let's just say yes, sir.
Councilmember White?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Wait a second. I thought the question was, did we want them not to?
Yeah, we do not want the council to staff.
So I'm saying, no, I don't want them to.
To look into it?
Yeah. So a no means yes, you want them to, and a yes means you don't want them to.
Okay.
Would you like me to rephrase? Okay.
You tell you what, let's...
You got it, though, didn't you?
Let's...
Gentlemen's amendment?
Let's make this easier. Start from that end for once. I always get to go first.
All right, so hold on.
And then you understand where my question was.
Okay, so is everybody okay or do I want to rephrase?
No amendment to the sign code.
No work from Planning Commission on this or Planning Department. That's what the motion is.
So a yes vote is no work.
Yes, no work.
Okay, a yes is a no, right?
Can we make it any harder?
Everybody abstain, please.
So this would be, for me, it's a yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, we'll mix it up.
Yes, that'll be fine. Yes.
Yes.
I knew where this was going and that was my question. My response was a yes. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
That was good.
Wow. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next time I will go with...
All Vern Hills, Michigan.
The positive, negative.
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes of what's running.
Okay. All right, so let's go to number 11. Item number 11 is the approval of contracts for capital improvement project, council chamber renovation. The award of contract for design and installation of audio and video enhancement to council chambers and overflow areas to Enco Systems, Inc. in the amount of $125,927.25. Award of contract for council chamber renovation construction to GV Construction, Inc. in the amount of $87,501.77. And the award of contract for design and build of council chamber furniture to GV Construction, Inc. in the amount of $44,520.
Mayor and council, before you tonight are two contracts to consider for approval for the council chamber renovation. Proposals were solicited for audio and video design and installation, design of council chamber furniture, and renovation construction. Staff reviewed the proposals and recommends an award of contract for audio and video design and installation to Enco Systems, Inc. to award the contract to GV Construction for both scopes of the renovation construction as well as the design and build of furniture to GV Construction. The contract amounts are within budget and are funded by PEG funds, which are funds that can only be utilized for the purpose of broadcasting a public or government channel. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Assistant City Clerk, could we have comments from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, then entertain council comments and discussion.
One quick question.
Okay, Mr. White.
Will this qualify under the dark-skY limits?
This particular project?
Keep the blinds closed, yes.
Yeah, keep the blinds closed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Was that the comment or the question?
That was the question.
All right, anything else? We're good?
On the design build, does that cost us more to do a design build than it is to have it designed and then approved and then built or...
Initially, when I looked into it, we would have to pay for the design element and then the installation portion. So I believed that it was going to be more expensive to hire a consultant to do the design and then go out and solicit for installation.
Thank you.
So I combined in.
Thank you.
You're good? Carol? You're good? Okay. I'm good as well, so I'll entertain a motion. It's a long one.
Yeah. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the award of contract for design and installation of audio and video enhancement to council chambers and overflow areas to Enco Systems, Inc. in the amount of $125,927.25 with the authorization for city manager to approve any change orders up to $5,000. And two, approve the award of contract for council chambers renovation construction to GV Construction, Inc. in the amount of $87,501.77 with the authorization for the city manager to approve any change orders up to $5,000. And approve the award of contract for design and build of council chamber furniture to GV Construction, Inc. in the amount of $44,520 with the authorization, city manager, to approve any change orders up to $5,000. And one, free digital billboard behind me.
You can erase that last part.
I second.
Yeah, he's second.
Councilmember White?
You have a second?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor for Tom Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
You could get the digital billboard, right?
We're going to put the seal digital.
Digital seal.
Seal, there you go.
Forty lumens or less.
Thank you. All right, it goes to item number 12.
Mayor, if I can, the great thing about technology is people can communicate with us. So I got a text from a citizen who said that we're having trouble with the audio and if we could, they're only catching about half of what's being said. So they just asked if we could...
To be louder. All right, thank you for that. All right, so with that, we're on item number 12. City council approval of change order number 10 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed $596,031.5.
All right. So I'm going to walk you through this particular change order. This was the owner-initiated change order that we brought to council several months ago. And council gave us direction to design and go out and get some pricing. Before I go down that road, I just wanted to point out to you, we had planned to have change order number nine on this agenda as well. We had some technical difficulty with that one. Unfortunately, it is in your report as showing. We will bring that back to you at the next meeting. So when you start to look at the totals in your change order table, just eliminate that one because you haven't actually approved that. So again, this is your owner-initiated change order. This is the first part of several that will come back to you. We did break those up because we have some critical path items, things that are going in today that we need to make some decisions on. And then the other ones really fall into later operations, and so we have some time. Those are all out to pricing now. And we expect that we'll be bringing those back to you in the next probably 45 to 60 days to make some decisions on those. So this is what we call the first chemical tank farm, as well as some building modifications that we're doing. This change order actually encompasses a little bit more than we talked about with you in just the owner-initiated change orders. We've actually added some things in here, and I'll walk through those. So if you remember, we originally designed the building to not have bulk storage for our chemical tanks. And then we specified some specific chemicals that were highly flammable, as well as we had future chemical allocation space for chemicals that we didn't know if we would need. Since we brought operations in-house and our staff has a lot more experience running this type of facility since we're doing our pre-treatment facilities now at our industrial locations, it does change some of the makeup water that's coming in, causing the need for several of these. So the first thing we talked about was relocating the sodium hypochlorite, going to bulk storage on that, and adding in a recirculation system. The recirculation system is new on that. What happens is if sodium hypochlorite sits in a line, it tends to crystallize. I know this from my swimming pool days. And then it causes all kinds of maintenance issues all the time. And so we, the staff asked as we went through design to add that recirculation system. So that was an additional cost beyond what we had estimated originally when we brought that to council. We did change out the aqueous ammonia to liquid ammonia. And that was the highly flammable caustic chemical for what I call more water-ish. It did save us some funds on fire protection. And so we've got the estimate for that. And then again, we changed to the bulk chemical. So we are looking at this particular change, as well as one of the things that we added is some... Because where we located, we're adding some just spare lines in the ground going over to the bulk. So if we have additional chemical needs in the future, we're not tearing up roads and parts. So planning for the future because we never know what our permits may be in the future, having and allocating that space. And then one of the other changes as we went through the design is some enhanced level controls within those chemical systems. So we don't end up with spills. In addition to that, the original piping was in the foundation of the building. I'm not a huge fan of that, nor was our staff. And so we've asked them to bring those pipes out of the foundation. There were some costs associated with that. But I think the long term of not having to dig into a foundation to fix pipes or chemical leaks, well worth the additional expenditure. And then the last thing are the building modifications, and these are just operational changes. So the staff asked for, instead of, you know, one toilet, one urinal, that we do two toilets because of the number of staff we have making both restrooms, unisex restrooms, instead of one male, one female. We have all men today. Doesn't mean that we won't have women in the future, but it does provide them at least some flexibility today. We did provide for a laboratory space in the building, and so we need a vena hood for that space. And so that was an additional in here. And then we did do some reconfiguration of the RO skids, and that was just to provide some additional room in the building. Those modifications all come to roughly about $596,000. We have the four million we've only used prior. Change orders one through 10 are millions. So we've used roughly about $300,000 in change orders to date. Change order number nine will come back to you for roughly about $138,000. That particular change order is actually going to be an operational offset when we bring it back to you. It's not something you're going to see today, but it is something you will see long term. We'd originally planned to pull our potable lines off of our fire loop around the facility. The unfortunate part about that is you would have to pay an eight-inch meter base charge, which is really expensive, versus we can do a four-inch or a two-inch base charge. And that's what we would pay for potable, and then you would pay a nominal fee for your fire line. And so overall, that change order will pay for itself in the long run. And we'll talk more about that really when we bring that back. But this 596, we feel very comfortable at this point. We are up out of the ground, the building is going on. We believe these are very needed operational changes to meet and exceed your permits that will come forward and to help the staff operate this facility. Brian Knoll is here, if you have any technical questions. Daxton is here, if you have any technical questions. But that's the overview of this change order, and we're recommending that council approve this moving forward.
Thank you. Council discussion or questions?
I... I just, I think that moving the plumbing outside of there, the piping outside the foundation is great. Also, planning for future piping underground so you're not tearing up the site, also very smart. So it's nice that we have staff that's able to go through there and make changes that are going to affect the efficiency of the plant as well as long-term operation. So that... That's off to you. Thank you very much for that. That's all I have, mayor.
I do want to comment that we're taking a nice proactive approach for once as a reactive. So it's always nice to use our funds for those types of things that'll help improve the facility. All right, this is approval. Yes, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Approval of change order number 10 for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade expansion in the amount not to exceed $596,031.5.
Hold a second.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor for Tom Santos?
Yes.
Yes.
We've installed fifty-four thousand linear feet of brine line on Reach One, no additional inclement weather days. They are starting to work on some of our groundwater issue areas and coming back, and if you've driven down San Tem anytime lately, you can actually follow our line. It's really kind of neat to see. But the contractor is moving very well, and again, we're, the three-week look ahead is attached if you wanna see exactly where we are in any given. On Reach Two, contractor is not, installed quite as many linear feet. Again, remember, we're in a much more urban setting in this one, so his installation has been quite a bit tougher, but we are at thirty-seven thousand linear feet. That puts us right around seventy-five percent complete.
Wow.
So we are, we're doing great on this. Less inclement weather days. This contractor is working several crews all over the place, so we're doing our jack and boars now, getting across some of our crossings, still working on this particular reach on our four oh eight permit with Army Corps. We hope and anticipate that that will come in the next couple of months, and we've gotten some good feedback recently from Army Corps on that. That would put us out of that nesting season and hopefully before the rainy season. So keep your fingers crossed there. You can see your project accounting. I'm doing very well. We've had very few change orders on this, although that number looks fairly big. Remember, that was a portion of the contract that we didn't actually bid, so if you remove that portion, you know, we're holding well under about two hundred thousand dollars for change orders on a forty-million-dollar project. Moving to the plant, again, same thing out there, we're out of the ground. If you've driven by recently, the building is starting to go up, so it's pretty exciting. We are actually doing something out there. And you can see all the pores, and we are meeting with the water district to talk about, you know, where to stop tomorrow. We're actually meeting with the water district about the reused water line. We have submitted our Title XXII engineering report. That was a deadline of September thirtieth that we gave to the regional board. That submitted over to the Department of Drinking Water, and in addition to that, we've just finalized our discharge permit, which will be our new discharge for this plant. That'll be submitted in the next couple of days to the regional board. And today, I got our official letter of extension for the project, so all is good.
Yes, good news.
Happy to answer any questions.
Great, very well. Any comments?
Title XXII report, I don't want that, we don't have drinking water at this time. What does that report entail? Sorry, I just...
He's here, I'll make him earn his money.
I want somebody to hear it and think that we have drinking water when...
So the Title XXII engineers' report is a report that goes to the Division of Drinking Water that explains to them the, what your new process is...
Okay.
...and how you're gonna meet all the Title XXII requirements for turbidity, for disinfection, cold form removal. And then it also, one of the most important parts is it shows what you've put in place for redundancy in case, you know, one thing doesn't work, how you're gonna protect the system and the users, if there's something else to back up that. So that's in a really abbreviated...
Sure.
...form of what that report is, and so we would expect that in the next probably thirty days or so, the department will get back to us with any comments.
Okay.
And then we can go and make any revisions or anything, but we don't anticipate that it's, there's anything really too controversial.
We can make a copy if you need something to sleep at night.
Yeah, I sleep just fine.
So that's what it is, just showing the department what you're putting in place to make sure that you can reliably produce recycled water.
Thank you very much, Brian.
And from a manager's perspective, that report is about seventy-five thousand. That's what it is.
Okay. By the pound.
By the board.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, brings us to number fourteen, set date. Oh, you know?
The patchwork on the work that's being done in Santa Mateo, is that finished, or is that just first?
That's just first patch.
Okay, wanna make sure. Thank you. That's all I have, mayor, sorry.
Awesome, not a problem. Okay, let's go to number fourteen, set the date and time for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget workshop.
Yep, I don't know if you noticed, the snap in the air, the nice cool breeze this morning, the early sunsets and the late sunrises, you know what that means? It's budget time, right?
That's what I thought of first.
I knew this is the best time of the year. By this time, most of our football teams are pretty much out of it, so many hours now to put into putting our budget together, so. Was hoping, I know October for some of y'all is gonna be extremely busy, so I was hoping that we could shoot for a budget workshop. The objective of the workshop would really be to, again, do the advanced work, look at our goals and objectives, make sure we're still on track with that, working on updates to our fiscal year modeling, so kinda run that out for you, let you kinda look at what it looks like moving on into the future for existing service levels, and then what our known programming objectives are to this point, and then to kinda talk strategies, you know, what kinda things we wanna look at, where do we wanna go. And was hoping that we could get this scheduled before we take our Thanksgiving break.
Okay.
And by break, I mean, I guess y'all may get one meeting done earlier.
All right, so we have the, of course, the fifth meeting, November fifth and November nineteenth, so are you looking at the week of the twelfth before the third meeting, or the week of the third meeting somewhere?
You know, it would probably be helpful to do it maybe after, because we've got, we'll have so much to ramp up to get you ready, to get, and get you through your regular meetings, and then we can get to, you know, your workshop. And don't know if you wanna do like an evening, or if you wanna do a Saturday or...
Okay, so it looks...
Oh, yeah, Sunday during church.
October twenty-third.
Twenty-third would be a Saturday. October, he wants November.
You want November?
Or if you, if you're ready...
November?
If you're ready to do late October, but we do have our brand-new finance director, and his feet are already wet, so he'll be ready to go.
Oh, he wants it then. Well, we've got Lega Cities coming up from the sixteenth to the eighteenth, and...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I kinda thought October was gonna be rough for council, 'cause you get so much on your plates. We got Lega Cities, we got... Is November too late? No, November's fine with us. That would be fine, so.
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, well, first of all, we prefer in weekday evening or a Saturday.
I prefer in the evening if we can schedule it as well.
Evening week?
Evening week.
Sure.
Evening weekday?
And we'll keep it to just a couple hours, couple...
Couple hours?
So now let's look at dates then. So nineteenth is the, is our city meeting, so...
We had November.
Yes, we're November. So November twenty twenty-one, how about that?
Twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
All right, what time?
Twenty twenty-one, open queue.
Those are fine, you're good.
Five, good.
Twenty twenty-one.
I can make five.
Wait. Councilmember White, can you make five?
Yes, I agree. How about you?
Twenty twenty-one, five o'clock.
Okay, so now just whittle it down to either the Wednesday or the Thursday.
I was hoping we'd get both days. Do you want to do both days?
No.
No.
Budget, y'all, this is budget.
Thursday, how about Thursday?
I'm fine.
Okay.
So I propose twenty-first. How's the twenty-first look?
Fine, I'm good.
Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah, either one works for me, mayor.
Okay, so I got fours, and then waiting for the week.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Number twenty-one at five P.M.
Yeah, no company planned for that weekend.
Oh, that'll change, so. Okay, so we're going eleven twenty-one at five P.M., two seven P.M.-ish. We can go to eight, but you have to provide sandwiches, so it's up to you.
Oh, sandwiches. It's Kyle's favorite food.
That's out of your pocket, not the city.
Oh.
He's all, oh.
You like finger sandwiches?
I'm just kidding.
Is that at five?
Five o'clock. That's great.
If you keep it under two and a half hours, the city will pay for it. Go over two and a half hours, that's on you.
And half, see? Hey, you're turning it on him, see? Uh-huh. Yeah, it's eleven twenty-one at five P.M.
I'm thinking, Councilman White, you don't like the budget.
Two hours and forty-five minutes if you could risk it for everyone.
Oh. We gotta...
We can always have a follow-up meeting if we don't...
That's true, that's true. I think we're good. I don't know, don't say try tip right now. Okay, so, all right. Okay, let's go to then fifteen, legislative updates and discussion. Mr. Barton, you're okay with that? You got everything you need?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. As you may have noticed, there's no legislative update for tonight. Since legislative session is over within Sacramento, we're gonna be rolling to every month update. The next one's gonna occur at the next meeting to coincide with the signing deadline of Governor Newsom on all the bills that are pending on his desk. So that'll give us a really good update on which bills are signed. Clever side note is, we are happy, at least in California, that they have signed the bill where college athletes can be paid from endorsements. I kinda wish they had that when I was playing, but then again, they probably wouldn't have paid me too much as a soccer player to be on a billboard or whatever it might be, so either way. Not, not here. It wouldn't have been here, maybe Riverside, but... So that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Just like, it works like over, do all night long?
Yeah.
Every morning, you'd have driven to Kyle's face.
Counsel reports, who wants to go? Counsel reports, counsel reports. Okay, so Ms. Carroll's going first, go.
I have nothing to report.
Nothing to report, Crosserov, next. Ms. Lara.
I attended the Beaumont Cherry Valley Park and Rec Oktoberfest. Looks like I had a really good turnout, and it was very enjoyable. Weather was great. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Santos.
I attended the Calamisa State of the City. They're good. So I'm with the, with the city manager, you know, Todd Gordon, and our mayor in attendance on there, Julio Martinez, and that was a good turnout. There's, there's a Senate, you know, Senator Moreland there, and the, and Jeffy with, it is the, you know, our minister in there, so he showed up. That was a good turnout, so that's the only thing I could tell you. And also, I attended the last, you know, September twenty-fifth, the SCAG new members, you know, orientation in there, so we're being trained on that, on the SCAG. What is SCAG? It's the Southern California Association of Governments. So there'll be a meeting coming up this Thursday. That's all, mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. White?
I didn't attend the Calamisa City, State of the City, and I'm still healthy. That's really all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. White. For me, very short as well, the CHP task force for the collision reduction grant for two thousand nineteen has ended, so I went to the final meeting for that, and Captain Alvarez from the CHP likes to send his thank you for the city for cooperating and to achieve the lease for all the cooperation we have between the CHP and the city of Beaumont. And the RCA, even though I haven't gone yet for the October month, they did have a species of the month last year, she sent it out late, the turkey vulture. Can't go wrong. They're carrion and all, yes, it's very seasonal, not related to the turkey, though. So I thought I'd throw that in there because she took the time to send out the PowerPoint and I thought I'd...
No relation, huh, to the turkey?
No, it's not related, just because of the color of it, whatever you call the thing hanging out.
What kinda sound does it make to you?
You got me on that one.
Any sound it wants?
No. And with that, we will move on. Mr. Worsinski, save me. Economic development.
I don't even know how to follow that one up, so I'm just gonna go with no update for economic development committee because the meeting is next Wednesday, so we look forward to sitting down and think, tanking through that business of the month program and seeing how that might work. So we'll report back on the fifteenth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The treasurer report?
I'm working my way back slowly here, but fortunate the meeting came today, 'cause my meeting isn't gonna be till next month, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. City clerk report?
Yes, on Thursday, I'll be going to Riverside to see a rollout of the new voting system. I'm gonna push them, obviously, to develop anything they can to get the word out to the rest of us as soon as possible. I think they're already doing a video, but I'm gonna see if they can take their exhibition on the road a little bit and, you know, show it to the rest of us. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. City attorney report?
Just briefly, you have at tab sixteen a list of the five cases that are pending where the city is a defendant and been served, and three of those we discussed in detail this evening in closed session, and then two, the other two, we've discussed recently, so I don't have anything further to report this evening on those.
Thank you, sir. City manager report?
My, I appreciate everybody yielding their time to me tonight. I really appreciate their reaction, so. Just remember, tomorrow, ten A.M. at Fallen Heroes Park, we've got our tree planting ceremonies, the WR COG will be there, and again, this is pursuant to Clean Air Day that we pass roses to participate in. So appreciate council setting that budget workshop, that's gonna be a lot of fun, so looking forward to that with our finger sandwiches. So concludes my report for you tonight.
Wow. Thank you, sir. Future agenda items?
Mayor, I'd like to suggest one.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe today's the second anniversary of the shooting in Las Vegas, and there's a petition going around, and I've been approached by a citizen that would like us to consider naming up, doing some kind of memorialization for Hannah Ayers and others who were impacted or affected by the tragedy in Las Vegas. So I'd like to see if there's a consensus to bring that back for discussion.
Okay. Any comments?
Sure, I'm okay with that. For discussion?
Yeah, for discussion, yes.
Ms. Carroll?
Okay, for now. All right, so bringing it back for discussion, we can talk about things like parameters and how we, how we set up these, and maybe the, you know, some sort of guidelines that we, we can use them for future and so on, so.
I'd like to maybe reach out also to the Park District to see if there's something that they can maybe join us or we could do.
And that's, and that's kind of a part of the discussion, how we can maybe co-op with others and so forth, 'cause I had had some similar ideas with the veterans for the Veterans Park, possible Veterans Park and stuff, so how we go about naming and doing that would be a good part of the discussion, and then we can decide on prioritizing that.
If you could, for that discussion, bring back a review of what other cities have done for this specific issue. Appreciate that.
Okay. And then, of course, research, I don't know if we have any parameters in place now, so... Ms. Carroll?
Timing-wise, you can let us know when you think it's appropriate, but an update on what's going on with the Cherry Valley, Cali Mesa, Beaumont interchange project as we move along. There's just been some recent noise in the community, so it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, at the next meeting, but you can figure out time-wise when you have something of substance to bring back to us on where we are in the timeline.
All right, very well. Seeing no more, then we will adjourn our meeting at seven thirty-five P.M.